Wesson returning for its ninth year. This time we're at Hanson Dam Recreation Center, home to a multitude of outdoor activities, including this humongous pool where the kids are having fun.
It's extra special.
Extra special for South LA area councilman Herb Wesson, who created the camp nine years ago. It provides kids whose families can't afford traditional summer camp, three days of fun in the sun, all at no cost. Meals, t-shirts, and swim trunks included.
So this does a lot for my heart. I think it does a lot for the kids. And today, I snuck my grandchildren out. So I have my six-year-old grandson, four-year-old granddaughter, and three-year-old granddaughter. And it was a challenge finding clothes that fit them, but we succeeded.
Donors, volunteers, and groups like Community Build and Project Save help make this camp possible.
I love this.
Reporting from Camp Wesson, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Nighttime activities included campfires, stargazing with high-powered telescopes, and a Polynesian-style luau. Broadway's Globe Theater is once again lighting up the downtown theater district and helping to breathe new life back into the historic corridor. Yana K. reports.
Three, two, one.
For the first time since the 1980s, the Globe Theater marquee on Broadway shines once again. Its iconic neon lights and spinning globe were fully restored and brought back to life thanks to the theater's new owner.
I'm falling in love with downtown. I'm falling in love with the Globe Theater because for me downtown is the soul of Los Angeles. You have a specific energy. It's unique.
City officials and community members gathered for the official relighting ceremony, marking a major milestone for not only the Globe, but for the entire Broadway corridor.
You know, one of the best things to bring us a district to life is lights. And so we're now seeing Broadway come back to life with all of these lights.
And the lights are just the beginning. Other parts of the Globe Theater are also undergoing renovations as part of Councilmember Jose Huizar's Bringing Back Broadway initiative, a 10-year effort to revitalize the historic downtown district.
One at a time, we are seeing these amazing historic gems brought back to life, and we look forward to continuing that momentum.
Built in 1913, the Globe was unique in that it was the only theater that accommodated full-scale productions. But now, the new owner says the theater will serve as a venue for live performances, corporate events, and more. A sure sign that more change is yet to come. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week. The Globe Theater is set to be fully operational later this year. And the historic downtown corridor isn't done yet. Plans are underway to open another hotel in the district. Also, police warn against a popular prepaid credit card scam, and a community garden gets spruced up. These stories and more in City Beat. The Seidel Group's free-hand brand of hospitality properties geared towards a younger traveler will soon come to historic downtown with the purchase of the 13-story 1940s Commercial Exchange Building at 416 West Eighth Street. The property's location at Eighth and Olive is one block from the proposed downtown LA streetcar line. It will also serve as a connection point between the convention center and the rapidly revitalizing Broadway corridor, the focus of Councilman Jose Huizar's Bringing Back Broadway initiative. The development of the property into a hotel is expected to create hundreds of new jobs. The LAPD is helping to get the word out about a popular scam involving prepaid debit cards, such as one seen here. Police say scammers usually call unsuspecting victims pretending to be from the Department of Water and Power or the IRS, and demanding that the victim purchase a prepaid debit card for an outstanding balance, or risk having their utility shut off or legal action taken against them. The victim is then asked to call back with the PIN to the card, allowing the scammers access to that money. Police say be suspicious of callers who demand immediate payment for any reason. The Hubert Humphrey Recreation Center in Pacoima gets a new playground designed by Shane's Inspiration. Shane's Inspiration designs and builds wheelchair-accessible playgrounds for kids of all abilities. The site consists of two play areas, one for kids up to five years old, and another for the 5- to 12-age group, which features a sea-life theme. Various elements of the playground are designed with handrails or other safety features for children who need assistance balancing or traversing the playground. The Howard Finn Park Community Garden in Tahanga received a spruce-up recently. Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, along with community groups, cleared out weeds, picked up trash, and planted some trees as a way for families to learn more about growing healthy food in their neighborhood. The garden consists of a fruit tree orchard planted with peach, plum, lemon, apple, and apricot trees, as well as a separate area for vegetables and native and non-native plants. Since taking office a year ago, Councilmember Fuentes has promoted and encouraged healthy living, a clean environment, and access to fresh food. The Van Nuys Police Station is celebrating 50 candles on its birthday cake. Anna Marcos takes us to the station's open house event and shares a bit of its history.
A little community outreach goes a long way, especially when you're celebrating your 50th birthday. The Van Nuys Police Station threw its doors open to the public for its big 5-0, and it may have even reeled in some new potential recruits in the process.
I've changed my mind on how I see the police. I think it's very tough, and you know, I thought it wasn't for me, but now they talk to me and they show me what they do, and you know, it's not all about the hard work, but it's also fun, and it changed my mind.
A lot has changed for the Van Nuys Station in 50 years. It was once the headquarters for the LAPD in the Valley, but with the opening of other stations such as the Valley Bureau and the Valley Traffic Station, this facility has become more of a community-oriented center.
We have our community programs, our youth programs that we launch out of here for the Van Nuys area, and then we still house our commercial crimes, which is identity theft, and our scientific investigation division, and our abused child unit are all still parts of the Van Nuys family here.
And now, the Van Nuys Station has opened a mini library for the public.
It's here to assist the big library that's closed on certain days of the week, but this is open 24/7. So if a parent has business to do with the police department, they have their little ones, they have a place to put them where they're safe.
And of course, looking at all the LAPD toys and gadgets is a fun community experience in itself. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Some of the displays included the bomb squad, SWAT, air support, Valley Traffic, and more. And in another part of the Valley, heavy machinery gave way to manpower as volunteers joined their council member to help clean up some Valley neighborhoods. Yana K. takes us to Operation Bobcat. Ten-year-old Diego Orozco is working hard shoveling dirt into this trash bag. He's spending the day helping clean a part of the Los Angeles River in Reseda, and at such a young age, Diego already knows the importance of maintaining a clean neighborhood.
We think that nature is important for our city and for our lives because trees give us oxygen and take in our carbon dioxide, so we can breathe.
The cleanup is part of Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's Six Community Action Teams, or Bobcats for short, that he announced last July to address various issues in the communities he serves. This beautification project is one of those efforts designed to clean Valley neighborhoods.
We're working to make this whole place beautiful, to make it a fitting and appropriate and contemplative walk along the water, and make it into what was that a community I saw, make it into a community asset.
Volunteers got help in the form of a sanitation pickup truck dedicated to helping remove all sorts of trash and debris.
We use that truck for physically getting the job done. When we can't move the wheels of bureaucracy to get something to happen fast enough, we jump in the truck and we just do it.
The truck can also be used to pick up bulky items from neighborhood streets. Blumenfield says he hopes these cleanup efforts will add just that much extra shine to proud Valley neighborhoods. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week. To report blight or to request a cleanup, residents can call 818-774-4330. There's always room for one more farmer's market here in Los Angeles. One of the newest markets opened just a few months ago in Glassell Park, a welcome addition to those who live and work in the area. This new farmer's market is located at 3150 North San Fernando Road, right outside the new Goodwill Workforce and Enrichment Center in Glassell Park.
The ease of parking and having live music is really great, and having tables, and you know, if you have any money left, you can go to Goodwill and buy something.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell's office partnered with CLA, which stands for Sustainable Economic Enterprises of Los Angeles, to open up this market at what they hope will become a community gathering place.
We think it's really part of building healthy communities and really enriching the community with these great food products and local produce items, and it's delicious.
Live music and an open-air market, a combination organizers and vendors hope will be hard to resist.
We're happy to be here at Glassell Park, and we want fresh food, vegetables for the community. That's why we're here.
It's been good. This is only our second time at this market, but we love the neighborhood.
And it's not often you go to a supermarket and learn where the food you just purchased came from, or how your dollars will be spent.
So we have an animal rescue in Mojave, about 90 miles north, and all of our proceeds go to supporting our animal rescue, feeding the animals. We have 800 animals, 700 goats, 350 make milk that provides for our goat cheese, and it's all free range. We don't have a kill policy, so a lot of goat farms will let their goats be sold off for meat when they're older, but we let ours live out their lives altogether.
While the Glassell Park Farmer's Market is the new kid on the block, the supporters say it's got great potential to becoming a neighborhood staple. The Glassell Park Farmer's Market is open Thursdays from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's the eighth farmer's market operated by CLA here in the city of Los Angeles. And we devote this week's list of things to do to National Night Out, which is observed nationwide. Here are just a few events around our city that are putting the spotlight on community building and crime busting in our neighborhoods. Whether it's a full-blown block party or a visit from the local police representative, for many communities throughout this nation, August 5th is National Night Out, a time when the spirit of community is celebrated and the right of people to enjoy safety from crime is honored. And one National Night Out celebration will be taking place at the Point Setia Rec Center on its sports field at 7341 Willoughby Avenue. This massively attended blockbuster event will take place from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m., hosted by the LAPD and the Melrose Action Neighborhood Watch. There will be pet adoptions, free tree giveaways, activities for kids, and you'll get to sample great food from area restaurants. Go to melroseaction.org. Meanwhile, the LAPD West Valley Division will be presenting its Movie in the Park event as part of National Night Out. The movie, The Sandlot, will be playing at around 6:00 p.m. at LAPD SWAT Officer Randall D. Simmons Park at the corner of Van Owen Street and Wilbur Avenue in Reseda, right next door to West Valley Station. You're encouraged to bring a picnic. We posted the event flyer on our LA This Week Facebook page. And over at Northridge Park, you can join Councilmember Mitchell Englander for Movie Under the Stars for National Night Out, America's Night Out Against Crime. The councilman's outdoor movie screenings are a way for families to have a safe and fun family outing at the city's various public parks. This event begins at 7:00 p.m. with the showing of The Lego Movie, beginning at nightfall, approximately 8:00 p.m. Bring picnics, blankets, and chairs. Admission is free, and popcorn and children's activities will also be available at no charge. Northridge Park is located at 18300 Lamar Street in Northridge. Enjoy National Night Out, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. They've been closed for a while as they underwent a facelift, but now the Barrington Park tennis courts have reopened for business, a project made possible by community support. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Playing tennis is a family affair for Lois, Colleen, and Ethan Orfus. They are among the first residents to enjoy the newly rehabbed tennis courts at Bretwood's Barrington Park.
This is three generations playing together right now. It's my grandson, my daughter-in-law, and the grandma.
Two, one, tennis.
Councilmember Mike Bonin helped find city money for the project, but he also got help from the L.A. Parks Foundation.
Recently, we were able to improve the children's playground and the basketball courts. There's a lot more that can be done here, and there's a lot more that will be done here.
The court was faded, a lot of cracks, and the fencing was rusted, and it's important to have given an opportunity to enjoy a court that they could play safely in and that they could enjoy.
But the $80,000 project might not have happened without community support. The Archer School for Girls donated $20,000.
If there's anything on the court, especially if there's like a crack or if anything might be throwing you off, that could affect your whole entire game and how you play.
With new flooring and fencing, serving a ball on the court never looked so smooth. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Besides the tennis and basketball courts and the playground, the park also has an indoor gym, community room, volleyball courts, and football and soccer fields. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
I am a proud digital citizen.
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 We are all proud digital citizens.
I pledge to take care of my computer tablet.
We pledge to be honest and responsible, online and off.
I pledge this.
To myself.
And my community.
Take a pledge to support our efforts to ensure all youth have a computing device and are safe and responsible online. No matter where they are, it's their future. Let's secure it.
My name is Eric.
My name is May.
We are in Chinatown. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Today, July 29th, and I believe, Madam Clerk, that we have a roll. Can you please call the roll?
Blumenfield, Bonnebusque, Nocidio, Englander, Fuentes, Huizar, Corretz, Correa, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, eleven members present in court, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. And can we have approval of the minutes? We'll ask Mr. Huizar to move Mr. Labange to second. Next item?
Committee resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell to move Mr. Corretz to second. Next item?
Mr. President, it is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, terrific. And we're going to ask Councilmember Mike Bonin to lead us in the flag salute, if you would, please.
Put your right hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I want to welcome everybody back from the council recess. While the council was on recess, the continued efforts by all the council offices, the council members themselves, their staff, and the entire city was not unnoticed, and there was a lot going on over the last few weeks. So I wanted to thank everybody for all of their efforts in maintaining the city services as well. With that, I would like to first turn it over to Mr. Wesson for a presentation. The floor is yours, Mr. Wesson.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. If I could have you guys come and stand with me, individuals from the Community Health Council, please come up, don't be shy. Don't be shy, we have police here to protect you today, so you're safe from me. Okay, everybody, come on. Anyway, I too want to welcome everyone back, and I have a presentation today, one that's a very important presentation for all of us. It's Know Your Digits, Be in Control. And what I mean by that, you should, if you have diabetes, then you should know what range to be in. This specializes in high blood pressure and hypertension. In order to make sure that you're doing well and that you're receiving proper treatment, you need to know what your digits are, if it's high, and if it is, what you can do. If you go with this and it's unnoticed, there could be heart damage and a variety of things that occur to you, and you don't even feel it. It's not like you fell off a bicycle and you hurt your arm. This is just like every day feels like any other normal day. Maybe some days you're a little lethargic or what have you, but you really need to know what these digits are in order to protect you and your family. I feel compelled to do this for a lot of reasons, but in the African-American community, this is a very serious problem. In the Latino community as well. In the community where you have individuals that are not the richest people in the world, you see this problem. In communities where individuals do not have health care, you see this problem. So I want to thank the Community Health Council for all of the work that they've done, not just on this subject, but on many others. And I have to reference our fearless leader, Lark, who is not with us today, but has been a champion in the south side and mid-city area of Los Angeles and the southern part of the county of Los Angeles. What we hope to do today is to raise awareness, to make individuals understand the importance of going out and ensuring that their blood pressure numbers are the way that they should be. There are so many treatment options that individuals can live long and productive lives, first if you recognize you have the situation, secondly if you get the proper treatment. So basically, we want to do this more as an alert to tell people that this is important, and they should do the very best they can to know their digits. I'd like to ask Gwen to come up and say a few words on behalf. In fact, let's give them a round of applause. These are hard-working, young men and women, young ladies, that are trying to ensure that people in need recognize and receive the health resources that they deserve. Gwen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilman Wesson, and good morning, everyone. On behalf of Community Health Councils, I want to thank Councilmember Wesson for proclaiming August as Know Your Digits Month. I think the council member said it very well about the health incidents that brings this about. One in three Los Angelinos have high blood pressure but don't even know it, and if it's left untreated, it can lead to very serious health problems like heart failure and stroke. So we've developed this campaign to encourage residents to get screened and to learn those numbers, learn your digits, partner with your health care professional about developing a plan for good heart health. We are working with about 30 other partners around the region who will disseminate information and host blood pressure screenings throughout the month of August. And we have a website that you can go to to find out where the screenings will happen nearest you. It's called KnowYourDigits.org. We are grateful to the city council and to Councilmember Wesson for supporting us in this effort. We think it'll help to make this a regional effort with building broad-based support, and we are grateful for this partnership.
I want to thank you very much for all the hard work that you're going to be doing. I guarantee you, it's going to save lives. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, if we could all get together and we'll look over this way, we'll put you. Like to present you with this proclamation signed by all my colleagues.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you. Fantastic. Mr. Wesson, are you going to share your digits with us?
My digits are good.
You're good, perfect. All right, thank you for sharing. All right, with that... All right, with that, seeing no members on the queue. If we could, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and run through some of the agenda items. Items 1 through 15 are items, I believe, that notice of public hearing have already been held.
Yes, Mr. President, for item 1 through 15 are items known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1G, J, H, and M may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid. Also, the lien amount for item 1D should be reduced to $424.30.
Okay, that'll be the order. Do we have any cards on those items?
Cards on items 1F and M.
F and M. Okay, we'll go ahead and hold those F and M on the desk. And...
Also, Mr. President, there is request to continue items 6 to August 12.
6 to August 12, that's two weeks from today. That'll be the order without objection. And Mr. Price?
Mr. President, also hold 1L.
1L. Colleagues, there are no other speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll. And don't tabulate anything yet. Mr. Corretz?
I'd like to call item 4 special for Mr. Corriane.
Okay, 4, so we'll remove 4 from that. We'll reopen the roll without 4, and we'll hold item 4 on the desk. And I believe, though, we do have a card on 2 and 15 as well. But public hearing has already been held on those two items, so those are going to move forth irrespective. No? 2 and 15, okay, let's try that one more time. And if we could, hold your applause down, Mr. Herman, it's great to see you again, too. Thank you very much. And I didn't look up to see who, in fact, that was, but I can guess. Yes, it was, okay. So with that, on the remaining items, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, those will be moved. And where does that take us now? Madam Clerk?
Items 16 through 28 are items which public hearings have been held. There's requests to continue items 19 and 20 to August 29th and item 28 to August 6.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Seeing no speakers on the queue for any of those remaining items, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are moved. Next items, please.
Items 29 through 43 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, well, those will be considered before us now. We'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, with that, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on item 38.
On 38, we'll go ahead and hold item 38 and open the roll on those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And if we could, move item 34 forthwith without objection, that'll be the order.
Also, Mr. President, for items 31 and 32, the annual salary for the Department of Transportation General Manager is $225,900, and for the Department of Cultural Affairs General Manager is $171,000.
Okay, well noted, thank you so much. And with that, we'll go ahead and go at items 1. Items 1, we have cards on. Mr. Herman. Followed by Chris Monderant. Followed by... Looks like Arturo Montanes or Montanes. Trying to read the writing, so I apologize. Mr. Herman, welcome.
Fellow Angelinos, in one minute, you will find out the truth about our taxpayers' liens. Does the city have a sufficient justification to protest and not protect you, the taxpayers? The taxpayers? Again, due process, upon notice on liens, our unreasonable violation of due process and precarious positions to violate the rights of the taxpayers today. And in my last second, I say to you again, what the hell? We need our officers on file to receive higher paychecks. Thank you, save my...
Stay on, okay. We are going to ask, we're going to ask that we hold applause, we hold applause, and as well as any booing or anything like that, so we can get through the agenda items. We want to also make sure we get through all the public comment cards, so we'll make sure that we hold all applause. And if you fill out a speaker's card on a specific item, you've got to stay on that item. So that'll be the only warning for the other speakers. For the officers that have filled out general public comment cards, those are general public comment, so you can talk about anything you'd like. For the specific items that are on the agenda, if you fill out a specific card for a specific agenda item, you've got to stay on that topic according to the council rules. So I just wanted to remind folks of that. So thank you very much. Chris, please. Good morning, please.
Good morning.
We're going to go ahead and start your clock over. I don't know if you realized you were already starting.
Thank you. I wonder if we could ask for maybe a couple of additional minutes, if you could indulge us?
We can only allow the same amount of time for every single speaker.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council and President Protem. Before you is a request that City Council deny and dismiss BNS petition pursuant to CCP 1094.5, and request for motions and a vote by the City Council to formalize and reduce to writing the council's findings of July 1, 2014, wherein BNS reported its removal of all adverse actions in this case, and to formalize and reduce to writing a directive for tree removal and sidewalk incurred repairs. Basically, the council graciously found in favor of the owner at the last hearing, July 1. However, nothing has been formalized to a writing. And we understand that Building and Safety has not done anything to formalize this. There are four proposed motions, very quickly on page 2. Motion 1, City Council formally deny the petition by Building and Safety and all ramifications of such petition. Motion 2, City Council direct Building and Safety to immediately prepare and remove all preliminary actions filed and recorded by Building and Safety, and direct Building and Safety to file and record full and unconditional release instruments against the property known as 2288 West 20th Street. We ask that these motions be brought through the chair.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate that. See, and you still had time left, it was perfect. All right, Vanson? It might could be Vanessa, and I apologize, I'm trying to read the writing. On behalf of Arturo? Council District 14? That's what this one says? Okay.
It's Arturo Montanes, actually.
Got it, all right, thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. I'm actually here on behalf of my husband, who couldn't get the time off. I'm asking that you guys, please, do not put a lien on the house. We actually did pay the fines back in November 2009. I wasn't aware that I had to bring 36 copies, but we also submitted plans to go ahead and try to fix this problem. When we went to speak to them, they were very rude and said we needed to get an architect. So at this point, I'm just asking that you guys, please, do not put a lien on our home. We are trying to put our son through his sophomore year at Berkeley. So I'm just asking that you guys, please, consider that.
Ma'am, I believe the council office would like to come speak with you on the side of the road, so they can see what they can work out with you and walk you through it. Okay? Please, no, seriously, no clapping, Herman, that'll be the last time that you're warned, that'll be disrupting the meeting. And if you are disrupting the meeting, and we do know that you're disrupting the meeting, you'll be asked to leave the meeting, so please. We've got a lot and a busy agenda and a lot of speakers to get through, and I want to make sure that these fine folks that took the time out of their busy schedule have the opportunity to be heard as well. Thank you so much. Speaking of which, we haven't heard from, for a while, John Walsh, welcome back. John Walsh, come on up. Is he in the chambers? Don't see him in the chambers, okay. We'll go ahead and note and file the card for item 1 for John Walsh and move on. So those items for item 1, we're going to come back to, I believe, on the one on CD14, that was 1F. So we'll hold that on the table, we'll vote on the others.
Excuse me, Mr. President, for item 1A, there's requests to continue that item to August 5th, and to continue item 1K to August 12th.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Are there any items left on 1, or... Mr. Price?
Mr. President, I want to change the item, item 1L, the amount should be $373.
Okay.
$373.
Okay, please don't yell and disrupt the meeting and come up to the podium in the middle of a meeting. If your name was called and you aren't in the chambers, then I apologize. So we'll call you on the next one, then. So, Mr. Price? I'm sorry, your request was? 1L?
Change the amount to $373.
The amount should be $373. You're disrupting the meeting, sir. That'll be a fair and final warning, please don't disrupt this meeting. Mr. Price, okay, then that'll be the order without objection. So those items, colleagues, are before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Weezer, did you have an announcement as well?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to make a quick introduction. We have some students visiting City Hall today from HYPE. That stands for Helping Young People Excel. They are students throughout the city in middle school. In this program, they would receive additional support, academic and social, to attend some of our independent schools in the city. This program was started by one of my staff members, Sarah Hernandez, a few years ago, very successful program. Students, if you could please stand and be recognized and congratulated for the work you are doing, and much success in the future. Congratulations.
All right, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Our future leaders. All right, next item, please.
Item 2, call special for cards.
Jim McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, you all, the mayor, the city attorney, and each of the council members have been served with my engineer's report. And I must say that there's been some hate mail on this, and I'm completely concerned about this because it could end up in the courts and it could affect every one of our business improvement districts, which would be a shame. This is completely unconstitutional, the way it was written. 15 years ago, you could get away with it, but the Supreme Court in 2008 has refined this and so has the legislature, so that we have to do things better. The engineer's report is trashed. The whole system is also a problem because of the Silicon Valley case in 2008. And I must say also that Article 9 of our charter says that we already have people that are doing this, so what it is, is a duplication. And also, the Streets and Highways Code says that the landowners are supposed to be doing this. We can do that, but if we assume a job that the landowners are supposed to be doing, then we assume the liability for the accidents. And we really don't want to do that as far as our funds are concerned. We'd rather spend them on something else, which means we should send this back and tell them, hey, do this over, get it right, and we have time. It doesn't have to be done until next year. Get it right according to the Constitution and the Supreme Court, and then we'll vote on it, and then we'll be pretty secure.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, no other cards on the item, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 4, call special by Councilmember Corriane.
Mr. Corriane?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to ask that the matter be continued until Friday, please.
Okay, the item will be continued until August 1st, that's this Friday, without objection, that'll be the order. Next item, please.
Item 15, call special for cards.
Mr. Herman? No longer here? Okay. Please stay on topic.
Application for public convenience of necessity for the sale of alcohol beverages located at 335 West 7th Street, San Pedro 90731. Will it serve the public's interest for more convenience of alcohol, Mr. Weezer? Really? A permit for more alcohol? Will the rank and file who cannot get money to service the public's interest to defend us from public alcoholism? Yes, you're at much fault as any person on the street who's an alcoholic or who's introduced to the necessity and convenience. When I was out in Venice Beach this past weekend, I enjoyed my good beer, sirs, on the beer, for that privilege of necessity and convenience. However, there are people here who have abuse and substance issues that you, as elected officials, should take care for the interest of our officers, not to get injured, but get raises and pay. So don't tell me I'm off-topic. We, the people, and the city attorney, Mr. Mike Fur, are fighting tobacco. We are also fighting alcoholism. Batman is back, folks, and Mr. Bonin, when for convenience and alcohol...
He's not direct any comments, direct to the specific members.
Isn't that his district, sir?
No, specific members.
Is that his district?
I'm not going to have the dialogue with you? Now you're disrupting the meeting, you're not staying on topic, and you're directing your comments to a specific member, which is not allowed under the rules.
Fine, now that we have your attention, we do not want public convenience of necessity for Jackson's Place Coffee Bar and Beer and Wine Lounge? Come on! What a stupid name for a business, and what a stupid idea for the public's interest to enjoy more alcohol. Come to Boyle Heights because we have all the alcohol, drugs, smoking, that you do not put a squandering dollar for. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so with that, we have no other speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. And where does that take us? Madam Clerk?
Item 38, call special for cards.
All right. Mr. Tucenian? Good morning.
Good morning, City Council Officers. My name is Gerard Tucenian with the Armenian Council of America. I want to actually personally reach out and say thank you very much to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and Paul Corriane for addressing the motion at hand. As an Armenian in Los Angeles, it is very touching for me to have the City of Los Angeles to acknowledge and put forth dollars to extend and commemorate the 100th anniversary commemoration of the Armenian genocide. Thank you for your support.
Great, no, thank you very much. And Mr. Herman?
I was called an asshole by the gentleman, but you know what? That's fine, because I don't take it as an insult. That's fine, because I don't take it as an insult, I take it as a privilege.
Please stay on topic.
And when we're talking about the Armenian genocide, what about the genocides of today, what's going on in America? We Americans are under the genocides of a bigger problem, and that's our VAs who are homeless, our VAs who need the recommendations of Cultural Affairs to be recognized as homeless veterans in America.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this. Okay, again, that was your last warning, we're gonna forfeit the rest of your time on this particular matter, but thank you very much, your time is up. You've been warned five times during this one specific council meeting alone, so, thank you. You forfeited your time, now you're disrupting the meeting. Please step away from the podium and go take your seat, thank you. So with that, members, we have no other items, this item is before us, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
And one F, we're gonna continue until the 20th, I believe? Is that correct? So, go ahead and continue that till August 12th, that's two weeks. We'll continue it till August 12th, without objection, that'll be the order, and I believe that should clear most of the agenda. Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
That brings counsel to general public comment.
Okay, general public comment. We've got, oh...
Just an announcement, introduction, if I can.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I want to acknowledge four of my interns who just completed their internship in my office, Andres Ramirez from Banning High School, Bianne Mercado from Banning High School, Joanna Rodriguez, and Angelique Reynoso, thank you very much for your service to CD 15. They were incredible in the work that they've done, and embraced civic engagement and saw government 101 at its finest, so we want to thank our interns. If I can't have them stand up...
Are they here?
They are here, Mr. President, thank you very much, sir.
Have them stand up. Come on, stand up.
They're right in front of them. Thanks, guys, we love ya, we wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Booskayana. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go into general public comment then, and we're gonna start off, I'm gonna read, if we could, we have two sets of velvet ropes, if you see, in front of the podium. When I call the three names in a row, please, first speaker come up to the podium, if we could, and then the second two line up behind the second set of velvet ropes, so we can quickly get to everybody, although I don't know that those are actually velvet, we'll call them red ropes, but I think they're pleather or something. In any event, with that, we want to make sure we get through all the speakers, typically, so you know, and we have a lot of public comment cards, general public comment is open for 15 minutes only. It's also usually when there's a lot of cards, we'll reduce it to one minute. We want to hear from everybody, so we're gonna allow all two minutes for every single speaker that filled out a public comment card here today, and we appreciate you coming out, so I wanted to share that with you. We'll start off first by Tyler Eisen, followed by Lou and Kristi.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning, Mr. President Protem. I'm Tyler Eisen, I'm a detective with the Los Angeles Police Department and the president of the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. As you are aware, after four days of ratification meetings, and by majority vote, 5,823 Los Angeles police officers rejected a proposed one-year contract offered by the city of Los Angeles. The league spent over five months negotiating with the city, and we presented the best offer we were able to obtain. We agree with Mayor Garcetti's recent YouTube messages, paying officers for the overtime that they work, and paying competitive salaries are the right things to do. Our membership's vote to reject the city's contract is clear evidence that morale is down. There's a deep-seated frustration and anger among the rank and file due to their low pay, a disciplinary system that is viewed as biased and unfair, and their belief that management is not receptive to their concerns. Mayor Garcetti's acknowledgement that our sacrifices during the past five years has, quote, "saved the city hundreds of millions of dollars," end quote, and quote, "helped keep our city government afloat," end quote, does little to alleviate our membership's frustration. And our officers are not without alternatives. Experienced and well-trained officers are desired by police and Sheriff's Department throughout Southern California. LAPD officers simply do not feel supported either by their department or the city. The lack of a raise was a slap in the face because there was not even an attempt to bring us up to the pay levels of the 14 other Southern California law enforcement agencies whose pay is higher than ours. This was not greed, this was the frustration of knowing that you are among the best, yet paid among the least. Increasing the starting pay is important because LAPD cannot fill an academy class, but fixing that problem alone does not help most of our members pay their bills. Also, our discipline system is broken, our members just don't feel safe doing their jobs. That's my overview, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, and... A couple things before we start, because I want to make sure that when you do come up to the podium, your clock is gonna start, so for those who wish to applaud, you'll be taking some of their time, so I want just to everybody to know that. And before we do start your clock, I'd like to acknowledge somebody else who has joined us here today as well, Councilmember Nate Holden is in the room, so I just wanted to say hello and send our respect to you as well. So, thank you very much.
Good morning, I'm Detective Lou Toriaga, I'm one of the directors of the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. I will give an overview of what we experienced in those 16 ratification meetings we had with almost 6,000 officers, and then my fellow directors will have more specific comments. By the way, in my time on the job, and in the memory of those with more time on than me, there has never been a response of as many members as to this contract ratification. What I was exposed to was a deep-seated frustration and anger in our officers. We had obtained some benefits in the proposed contract for them, but there was no raise in pay. Officers were offended that there was no recognition by the city that LAPD officers were paid less than their neighboring city officers, with nowhere near the complexity of law enforcement problems faced every day by our officers. It was apparent that our members were only numbers. As the mayor has said, it is, quote, "a math problem." This is not a math problem, this is a priority problem and a trust problem. Officers feel alienated from management and the city, they do not feel like partners. Somehow, the feeling that we are all united and a mission of public safety must be restored.
Good morning, I'm Officer Kristi Eckert, and I'm a director with the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. LAPD officers acutely remember when the city was in financial crisis because they stepped up to the plate. They agreed to forego cash overtime, which saved the city $80 million a year. They also agreed to a pension reform by adding Tier 6 to the pension system, which saved the city $30 million a year. There was a reduction in pay for new hires, which saved the city $5 million a year. Over a period of three years, LAPD officers have saved the city hundreds of millions of dollars. These were supposed to be temporary measures. The savings to the city granted by our officers' actions could easily provide funds for a raise that would bring them closer to the salaries and benefits of other law enforcement agencies around Los Angeles. The city currently has $400 million in its reserve fund, and our officers' sacrifices are part of the reason for this. It's time to recognize that the temporary measures need to be discarded and return our officers to the pay and benefits that they deserve. The city's refusal to meaningfully address the disparity of our officers' pay compared to other law enforcement agencies, the department's arbitrary, biased, and unfair discipline system, inconsistent working conditions, and the perception that management is unreceptive to our concerns, is creating a toxic stew that will have long-lasting and impactful results for the city's residents. Public safety that's delivered by these highly-trained and dedicated men and women of LAPD cannot come on the cheap any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter, followed by Adolf, Karina, Joretta, and Mark.
Good afternoon. According to city financial documents, there was 2,009 projected deficit of $529 million, yet there was a $74 million surplus when the year ended. The 2010 projected deficit was $429 million, yet there was a $57 million surplus when the year ended. The 2011 projected deficit was $336 million, yet there was a $40 million surplus when the year ended. The 2012 projected deficit was $238 million, yet there was a $141 million surplus when the year ended. And now, in 2013 fiscal year, we are told there is a $215 million projected deficit. Our experts estimate that all the former years, the year will end up with a surplus, we think around $200 million. The "sky is falling" mantra is sung every year, and every year the sky doesn't fall. The reason is that when the deficit is calculated every year, there are income streams that are not included in the calculations. For instance, one-time revenues, normal growth revenue, budget, underspending, efficiency savings, all not included, but all come in through the year, and the city ends up with a large surplus, again, this year, $200 million range. If public safety is first, then public safety should be funded first. These budget games are very common and used to sway public opinion, but also insulting to our police officers who put their lives on the line every single day. Funding does exist to give our officers parity with other local agencies. I ask all of you here today to take a stand on this issue and be fair to the 10,000 men and the women of the LAPD. By weighing in and asserting jurisdiction, make public safety your priority. Thank you very much.
Mr. President and council members, I'm Director Adolf Rodriguez and a 24-year police officer. Because so many officers have left for other agencies and academy recruit classes are only half-full, there is a direct impact on our ability to provide safety to the Los Angeles community, its residents and visitors alike. Roll calls that should be deploying seven or eight cars are fielding only two or three. Pressure on watch commanders to provide coverage with inadequate numbers of officers to meet the demand end up enforcing them to generate creative ways to make it look like minimum deployment standards are being met, such as fielding ghost cars. It is not the watch commander's fault, it's a lack of resources and the mismanagement of assets that is at fault, and that occurs at a much higher level. Officers and supervisors know that they are without, they're working the streets without sufficient units to do the job. The result is inadequate coverage, and this has direct impact on response time to emergency calls and crime reduction. There is also a direct impact on the ability of an officer in trouble to get vital timely help that is needed from other officers. Will any units be available? Will the responding units have to come from another division, perhaps another bureau? The impact on crime is already apparent. Last Thursday, the LA Weekly examined crime statistics and found a 45% increase in robberies and van eyes, a 40% increase in aggravated assaults in Topanga and Devonshire, 20% increase in aggravated assaults in Central Division, and a 66% increase in Northeast Division homicides. Lack of parity with other organizations caused us to lose over 130 officers last year, mainly to other agencies. Each time a new officer leaves us, we lose $150,000 in training costs, which translates into a major benefit to the hiring agency. The loss of officers and the inability to recruit is a recipe for disaster that needs to be addressed immediately. Thank you.
Good morning, Karina Lee, Vice President. There is a crystal ball that we can look into and predict the future. We can learn from others' mistakes and not repeat them, that's the San Jose PD. A decade ago, San Jose officials boasted that having the safest, largest city in the country. Today, they are struggling to put a decimated police department back together after reducing their pay and benefits for their officers. Their ranks went from 1,400 officers to 900 officers, with another 300 officers expected to leave or resign this year. They are also spending large amounts of money on recruitment and only lose these recruits in a short period of time. Sounds familiar? Here at LAPD, we train so others can retain. San Jose's crime rate has gone up, their response time has gone from eight minutes to 20 minutes. They have instituted mandatory overtime. Last week, San Jose officials announced that they are going to have to send unarmed civilians in the community as community service officers with only tear gas to respond to non-emergency calls to free up police officers. The civilians cannot write checks, make arrests. There is a severe shortage of police officers, and this is a necessary measure they have to take. San Jose news sources quoted a neighborhood association member whose streets are rampant with gangs, prostitution, and homeless. He said, "I'd like to see more actual police officers on the street, especially when I call 911. We want faster response time, we want them to show up. Right now, they don't show up. We really need to put the money where the officers are." How much longer before our citizens will be saying the same here? San Jose is sounding a warning bell, we need to listen. We need to fix our parity issues before they become another San Jose, not afterwards. Officer safety and public safety are the number-one priority for this city. Let's keep the citizens and our officers safe. The men and women behind me are the best of the best, let's show them through a competitive pay and benefit package. Thank you very much.
Good morning, I'm Joretta Sandoz, I hold sergeant rank, I'm a director for the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. A common theme that we heard from the city is, if we give you a raise, we have to give the 43 other unions a raise. While we have the greatest respect for our civilian brothers and sisters and recognize the work they do, comparing us to civilian workers is like comparing apples to oranges. You will discover that LAPD is ranked number 14th in pay in all the agencies surrounding us. We are the best of the best, and we're asking this city to treat us that way. LAPD did not lose 130 officers last year because they transferred to DWP, or they transferred to any other city entity, they transferred to other outside agencies, and we need to compare, be compared to that. Public safety isn't an option, it's a fundamental necessity of civilization and a prime guarantee of freedom. LAPD officers prevent crimes, save lives, and combat terrorism every single day. We risk our lives every day to make sure this city is safe. Please don't lose perspective, crime is down on the backs of these LAPD officers and the citizens of Los Angeles who work together to ensure that this city is safe. LAPD officers protect lives, they do it with commitment and pride, and it's a thankless job, so what I want to say is thank you, LAPD officers, for putting your lives on the line every single day, thank you for protecting this city. LAPD officers bargain alone, strong leadership, strong city leadership, should be able to distinguish the jobs that we do and pay us accordingly. LAPD officers are the best of the best, we're world-class, you have to pay us and treat us like we're world-class, or Torrance, Santa Monica, Redondo Beach, they'll be taking us. So I ask you to please compensate us as such.
My name is Mark Runham, I'm a director at the Los Angeles Police Protectively League. So far, everyone has been talking about numbers, but this is not just about economics. There's a real human side to this as well. The majority of our officers are young men and women, and in addition to being subjected to the pressures and problems of law enforcement, are also struggling to provide for their families. Many continue to live at home with parents. Most cannot afford to even live in Los Angeles and have to pay for long commutes and forego the dream of homeownership. Thousands have to supplement their incomes with off-duty employment just to make ends meet. All of this is not without cost, cost to the officer himself as well as to the department as a whole in the long run. The stresses and strains built into the choice of choosing a career in law enforcement do not leave the average person with anything left over to deal with the anxiety and pressure of not having enough money to meet ends, to meet the needs of daily life. Our officers have lost houses, cars, and been forced to move in with relatives because of the low pay and loss of income over the period of the last contract. We are asking the city of Los Angeles to provide LAPD officers with a wage comparable to surrounding police agencies. The cost of milk, electricity, gas, and even minimum wage continues to increase, while LAPD wages are a net cumulative loss over the last decade. We hear the mayor and our chief say they respect and believe our officers are the best in California, if not the nation. However, words are hollow without substantive action. Our memberships spoke clearly during the ratification meetings, therefore, the city must demonstrate to our members through their action that they truly believe that we are the best police department. Grant them the parity in salary and benefits that agencies all around us give to their officers. That is our goal, we hope it is yours. Thank you. Thank you.
David Nunez, Rusty Reddigan, Bryce Verna, and Kathleen Matthews, be next.
Good morning, everybody. Honorable council persons. Many of us police officers have been here before, asking for your help, for your assistance to solve crimes, and you have responded with rewards. Today, I am here, a 31-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department, asking for your help and support in our contract. Our officers risk their lives daily to protect the citizens of LA. At the very least, they deserve a salary that allows them to afford the basic necessities of life. They should have, they should not have to work overtime or off-duty jobs to be able to afford food, housing, and clothing. They should not have to work two or three jobs to put their children through school, like I do. Many of us have families, and some of us have health issues that prevent us from working several off-duty jobs to make ends meet. The minimum wage went up, which means that the business people will pass the increase onto the consumer. The price of food, gas, clothing, all have gone up, with a 0% to cost of living you propose to the officers that are going, we're going backward, we should be going forward. Please help us with that endeavor. On the other hand, the officers also deserve a chief of police who makes disciplinary decisions that are fair and impartial and are not based, and are based on the facts of unbiased, objective investigations. Any police chief decision should not be based on the involved party's families, connections, or their personal rank, or the person's rank. Officers have a right to a discipline system that is fair and objective. It is not acceptable that the rank and file get fired for a DUI incident while the command staff officers get a ride home with no penalty. It is not acceptable for the rank and file to be held to a higher standard of conduct...
Okay, I don't want to cut, I don't want to cut you off, but I want to make sure that we give everybody an equal amount of time, but thank you.
I understand that, sir, but it's, well, I get it.
I appreciate it. And if you've got it in writing, you can submit it as well for, as part of the record if you'd like.
I have, to the mayor as well.
Great, actually.
Maybe you're a friend of the chief of police, I don't know.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, folks. My name is Officer Rusty Reddigan, and respectfully, I want to thank you all for your time. We police officers, like all of you city council members, love our job, our city, and the people we serve. And we rank and file have written a blank check to the people of this great city, like three of you that are up there now, who tangibly understand exactly what that means to us. So that being said, fairness is all we expect in return, and especially with respect to our disciplinary system. As police officers, we do an inherently dangerous job that has the most finite of consequences. And 2014, as you all know, has brought far too many salient examples of this. Those losses that we cannot control, however, our disciplinary system should take a common-sense approach that is transparent and logical. Equitable treatment by our management shouldn't be an unrealistic expectation. And yet, more often than not, management lets us down as far as that expectation. And basically, being judged by the shiny items on your lapel should not be what, the weight that is used to judge us in these disciplinary proceedings. You know, a lot of times when these things occur, again, unless you've gotten the golden handshake, the current disciplinary system is not only broken, but spiteful, hostile, retaliatory, and in many cases prevents any lateral or upward mobility within the department. There is no fairness or consistency with common sense, and often, there's an unwritten rule of a five-year rock that is placed in an officer's pocket forwarding any advancement in his career. As you guys can understand, this brings a lot of undue stress to not only our families, but us officers as well. As for the rank and file, we've been loyal and will remain to be loyal, but we're sick and tired of being sick and tired. And in terms of this disciplinary system, it's turned our morale into an arterial bleed that's in need of a tourniquet. So respectfully, we would appreciate your leadership on this, and again, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Again, if you could just state your name before you speak.
It's Officer Bryce Verna. Good morning, distinguished council members. My name is Bryce Verna. I'm a motor officer with the Los Angeles Police Department. I have been an officer for over 15 years and am currently assigned to Valley Traffic Division. Proudly, I have been a motor officer for almost 11 years. I want to assure you, I'm not here on my day off out of anger and do not have any ill will towards the City of Los Angeles or the city council. I'm here to make a few points and hopefully shed some light on the importance of my job, my fellow officers behind me, and why we stand before you here today. I was a Boy Scout, a military veteran, and I signed back up after 9/11 to help my country. I've tried to be the best person I possibly can in my life, and there is no question I wanted to be an LAPD officer, the tradition, the history, and the best out there. Departments around the world model their training in policing and sometimes even our uniform and badge. We are portrayed in TV shows and movies. I knew going into this job I would never be famous, nor would I get rich, nor, no, 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 no derity, and there would be a lot of sacrifice, hard work, and stress. In 15 years, I've never had a New Year's Eve off. I've missed countless family and friends' events, birthdays and holidays. In fact, this week alone, I've worked on my motorcycle during, doing traffic enforcement, 170-degree weather, worked the president, a funeral, and on Saturday night, while my friends and family were going out or asleep, I was working DUI enforcement till 3:00 AM. There's never a day where I haven't been almost hit at least once or have a close call, all while having to make split-second decisions that could be life or death. We have an extremely hard job, full of stress, on top of court training, special details, and balancing a social life plus family. In closing, I have to admit, my feelings along with my fellow officers have been hurt. This has been a horrible year for LAPD, for fallen officers, and there have been numerous off-duty deaths and accidents with our family in 2014. There has been talk by LA city officials that stated over 40 separate unions are up for contract negotiations. I have the utmost respect for all city workers. Trust me, I couldn't go down in an electrical vault, I couldn't design a building, I couldn't make power, I couldn't battle a burning building, but I can assure... Okay, sorry. I can assure you, no other city agency, bureau, or department has lost 203 of their, of their own. No other entity faces the constant danger day in and day out, and all I ask is please don't compare us to anybody else. We have reduced crime levels down to the last 10 years to 1940 levels, and my father gave the ultimate sacrifice to the city in 1983.
Great, thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. President, distinguished members of the city council. My name is Sergeant Kathleen Matthews, and I've been a proud member of this department for more than 20 years. I love the department, and I love the city of Los Angeles. During my career, I have seen crime rates drop to historic lows, and LAPD relationships with the communities that we serve improve significantly. These achievements would not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of the men and women of this department. Sadly, I've also watched the pay of LAPD officers drop in comparison with police agencies in Southern California. For years, we have been asked to make sacrifices, financial sacrifices, that have been at great cost to our officers and their families. We have police officers who have lost their homes and been forced to move in with family members and roommates. The cost of living, including food, transportation, education, are steadily rising, along with our healthcare and pension contributions. It is time now to raise LAPD wages. We have saved the city more than $478 million in the last four years and continue to work hard and serve the citizens of Los Angeles. For many of our younger officers, homeownership is no longer a reality on an LAPD officer's salary. These are the same men and women who put their lives on the line every day for this community. They simply cannot afford to make ends meet. We have become a more educated police force in recent years, and many of our officers have advanced degrees and work experience outside of law enforcement. We are not only losing these officers to other higher-paying law enforcement agencies, we're also losing them to higher-paying professions as well. You have asked for our support as individuals and also as the city council. I am now imploring you to support our brother and sister officers, their families. Los Angeles police departments are the finest in the country, and please treat us that way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Craig Marquez, Terry Turner, Joel Seacor, followed by Marcel Cruz, and finally, John Genal.
Good morning. Good morning, esteemed members of the Los Angeles City Council and fellow brothers and sisters of the Los Angeles Police Department. My name is Craig Marquez, and I am a detective in LAPD. More importantly, I'm a resident of East Los Angeles, whose family lives in Council District 14. This contract isn't about recognition for the job we do. In 19 years on the LAPD, I have received a Los Angeles Police Department Medal of Valor, American Legion Medal of Valor, California Peace Officers Association Award of Valor, and the 2012 Top Cop Award as one of the top law enforcement officers in the nation. I can tell you, I have received more than enough recognition for the work I do. I work, I wear many hats in my everyday life. Besides detective, besides the detective hat that I wear at work, I am also a single father who has full custody of a beautiful 16-year-old daughter and a 10-year-old son with special needs. We have heard many things about this recent contract. Some of it applies to certain people, some of it not so much. But let me say, as a single father, and for those who sit in these chambers today, to call something a cost-of-living adjustment, or COLA, is not what it really is. For those of us in my position, a single parent, we should call it for what it is, a cost-of-daycare adjustment. For the majority of us, the demands of police work lead us to the impossible task of finding daycare that will accommodate our schedules. If you are lucky to find a babysitter or daycare that will accommodate your schedule, I can guarantee you, you will pay top dollar for that service. And that service has not gotten any cheaper in the last five years, even though we have been without a raise during that time. Ladies and gentlemen, the mountains we move every day in our lives are real. Every emergency that Los Angeles faces come with sacrifices that an entire family make. That means every riot we see over a basketball, over a basketball game, every day, some group decides to occupy LA, we are forced to pay a higher rate of those, for those watching our children. In closing, I am a proud resident of Los Angeles. My best years have been with the city. We are not adversaries, we are partners. Thank you.
Morning.
Council.
Morning, colleagues. Good to be here all. My name is Terry Turner. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Police Department, the best police department in the history of law enforcement. For 24 and a half years, I've been doing this job. In 1994, I had an opportunity to go to Santa Monica PD because they offered me more money, and that was very tempting. But I knew in my heart that I was leaving the greatest police department in the country. So I chose to stay, because at that point, the money wasn't all that important. Fast forward to 2014. Well, it's very important now, because as most of my colleagues have got up here and mentioned to you, and I'm sure you all know, we are asked to do a lot with less. We put it on the line every day, and I look at this sort of as a business. In the National Football League, the National Basketball Association, Major League Baseball, the number-one players are paid accordingly. We are not. When it comes to salaries, we are not in the same ballpark as other agencies in the city and in the state. And unfortunately, a lot of us pay the ultimate price. I read an article recently in the LA Times about the city pays millions of dollars to retired police officers and retired fighter-fighters. Well, that was very insulting to me, because I think they've all earned it throughout the years that they worked for the city. But what I didn't read in that article, and I want to be very clear on that, what I didn't read was Chris Cortio, Paul Verna, Nick Lee, Tina Cabret, Kristy Hamilton, Van Johnson, James Beha, all officers that were killed in the line of duty. Well, guess what? They're not going to be able to rejoice, I'm sorry, enjoy their retirement. And all the other officers that we lost, and finally, because this is personal, 2005, May 5, 2005, I suffered a stroke. I spent five days, five days in ICU at Holy Cross Hospital.
I was going to wrap it up if you could.
One minute, please. Couple of seconds.
Well, I can't allow another minute. I gotta reopen it for everybody else if we did, so...
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And thanks for understanding. If, we've got to just do it all...
Yes, sir, absolutely, sir.
In fact, I've got a stack, just so you all know, and I'm going to hold your time for a minute...
Respectfully.
...of speaker cards for when you all leave that aren't police officers as well, on just other matters and the folks that come to public comment each and every day. And I think you've met some of those earlier today in the meeting. We have to treat them the same way that whatever we do with you as well, and it's just got to be fair across the board in terms of public speaking and time, so I just want you to all be aware of that.
Understand, sir.
And I appreciate your understanding.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Good morning to everybody. My name is Marcel Cruz, and I am a police officer at the LAPD's Topanga Division. I've been a police officer for almost 12 years. I'm currently assigned to the patrol assignment at Topanga. On December of 2013, I was diagnosed with a very rare, aggressive, and life-threatening form of cancer. As a result of that, in January of this year, I suffered the amputation of my left foot. While I was at home suffering from this loss, fighting to survive and recover, my peers, everybody here present, the Protectively League and numerous other department resources pulled together to help me overcome this situation so that I could return to work. Fortunately, on May 28 of this year, I was able to return to the field doing what I love most, working patrol. In June, I finally was established to the actual patrol assignment, and now I can be out in a black and white, serving the citizens of Los Angeles. And these kind of sacrifices, I know that they don't really mean much to some of you. Maybe they might not mean anything at all, and I don't expect that to. But what I do respectfully ask for is that, just like I gave everything in my power to overcome the situation, to recover and get up from my condition and return back to the streets to protect the citizens of Los Angeles, I respectfully ask that you all do the same for us, that you do everything in your power to protect us and to not take away our overtime, our COLA and benefits that we worked so hard for. And while I'm here, I'd like to thank all of my peers, the Protectively League, everybody that was there for my family and I to support us through this horrendous situation. Thank you so much, sir, for your time, and you all have a good day.
No, thank you very much.
My name is Joel Seacor, and I was born and raised in the city of Los Angeles. I am the second generation of city employees and the second of four brothers, all of whom are police officers on this department. Four years ago, as an LAPD academy recruit, I never imagined that I'd be standing before you today under these circumstances. In 2006, my oldest brother became an LAPD officer, and when I applied to the LAPD, I was aware that new hires would make 20% less pay during academy and probation, but that upon completion of their probationary period, we would be brought back up to the normal pay scale. LAPD recruitment flyers and the Los Angeles City website supported this, but the 20% pay raise never came. Living in Southern California is hard and expensive. My wife, infant son, and I struggled to afford the essentials. We took on multiple roommates simply to afford our housing costs. It has become even harder lately as utility companies increase rates, food and gas prices rise, and the, and the value of the dollar continues to erode due to inflation. The two brothers who joined after me have also made sacrifices in their own ways. Thanks to my parents, though, we've been able to stay with the LAPD by them helping us in some ways, whether it was with bills, school loans, cars, and even housing. Seen within one family, the pay disparity between brothers is quite amazing. Our oldest brother's lifestyle is very different from ours, even though we assume the same risks and do the same job. The rhetoric, "I am valued as a police officer, my hard work fighting crime is greatly appreciated", does not pay my family's bills. It is discouraging to see others working for other local agencies making significantly more than me. No one joins LAPD to become rich, but every single officer, whether they are affected by the 20% pay disparity or not, expects to be able to provide for their family... expects to be able to provide for their family and live comfortably. This is not happening. Despite years of pleading and even initiating legal action, the city continues to delay fixing the full 20% pay disparity and flat-out refuses to compensate through back pay those hired under false pretenses. If we are valued and appreciated, then please demonstrate that to us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and, Joel? Thank you all. And Joel, I graduated the police academy with your brother, by the way. So tell him I said my best.
Yes, sir, thank you.
With that, that concludes that portion of general public comment. I don't have more cards from the police officers, so I wanted again, thank you very much. I also wanted to let you know that for general public comment, for those of you that aren't aware, is that we can't respond or talk or push our buttons or have a dialogue on general public comment that wasn't part of the agenda. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay, so we want to let you know that while we're here to listen on the general public comment, we don't legally have the ability to communicate and share back with you any points of view on any particular items that are said during general public comment. So I wanted to share that with you as well. So with that, for those of you that wish to stay for the remaining portion of the meeting, you're, you could do so if you'd like. We're gonna go on to just general public comment cards from the general public. Or we can allow a few minutes to let council chambers clear out. But I want to applaud all of you for showing up today and every day and suiting up and doing the job and putting yourselves on the front line to protect people of Los Angeles. So thank you very much.
Luca, Robert Lucas. And then, is it a Deepak? I cannot pronounce the, will you please come forward and identify yourself?
Good morning, Los Angeles. My name is David Hernandez from-
I know who you are.
Valley Village. And I came here today because of the comments that were just made. I'm not a police officer, none of my family members are police officers, but we all received the benefits of the men and women in the police department. Unfortunately, when most people interact with police officers, they're either a victim or a perpetrator. And I'm here to really speak to the residents of Los Angeles that the men and women of the police department are not just police officers. Their husbands, their wives, their mothers, their fathers, their uncles. And all of the challenges that we face as residents of this city, they face. With, with financial problems, marital problems, illness with their family members, all of those problems are taking place. And as we move forward with this conversation and these negotiations, I'm asking the residents of Los Angeles to take that into consideration, that these are individuals that are just like us. And as we speak of pay equity in the city of Los Angeles, that if they were, these were hotel workers, you would be championing a higher increase in pay. If these were custodial workers and other union members, you would be championing those. As this city is going to move forward in discussing those pay increases for other individuals in the city of Los Angeles, we cannot be calling for equity in pay for services rendered when we turn a deaf ear to these men and women. To not be paid for overtime, which they are forced to serve, to not get a cost of living raise is unconscionable. And so as we move forward, I want us to have this part of the equation. The financial challenges facing the city of Los Angeles are not their fault. It is a direct result of policies and practices-
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. So is, do I have Mr. Lucas? And Deep, I'll let you, and after you, if we could add Mr. Herman. So go right ahead, sir, welcome.
Good morning, councilmen, councilwomen. My name is Robert Lucas. I was born and raised in Compton in the sixties. So it's kinda hard for anybody to tell me about racism, okay? I have an issue that is very important to me and in my heart. And it has a lot to do with some of the things that we deal with every day. It's the mentally ill, the homeless, the addicted. I'm living right down on Sixth and San Pedro right now because of the reconstruction in state prison. I just got out. They let me out. I'm so grateful and full of joy. The last time I was in this building, I was in the sixth grade, and here I am again. My life is filled with love and joy and passion. I have an idea that it can be a small piece to the puzzle to try and help this. I'm gonna tell you a little story of a person who was so molested, so tortured, so whipped with extension cords, so beat to the ground psychologically that they were lost. I was a latchkey kid. If you don't know what that is, I grew up alone. My dad made a living, I was home alone, I schooled alone. So the city of Los Angeles was my family. It's the only love that I ever knew. I couldn't wait to get out into the streets in the morning because the public was my family. I had nobody else. It's the same down here. I have such love and care for these people that we've cast aside because we don't know how to deal with them. But I'm telling you from experience, because somebody had the courage to stand with me while I fought them off to try and get to the root of the problem and unveil myself of some secrets that were holding me down and I didn't even realize it. The love in my heart that I have for the people in this room that can help me bring this about. There's plenty of resources, they're just not directed quite right. I'll be back Friday, because I'm gonna see the county supervisors tomorrow. I love every one of you, have a great day.
Thank you. So after Mr. Deepak, if we could have Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh, and a Mr. Jose Martinez. Yes, sir, welcome.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to LA City Council. I would like to introduce myself to residents of LA and City Council. My name is Deepak Soni, I'm with the California Freedom Project. We are an economic organization that tries to bring issues to millennials on college campuses. Today, I would like to bring the issue of college costs and out of costs that are spiraling out of control. The LA Times, two weeks ago, reported on UC San Francisco's new chancellor who will be paid at $750,000 every year. It reported also UC Santa Cruz's chancellor will be paid at $924,000 a year. This is at a time when property taxes in the city of Los Angeles and all over California are at an all-time high. Tution rates are at an all-time high also. I am actually an alumni of UCLA. And I would like to let City Council know that there is a lot of waste right now in the UC system. There's a lot of waste that's going around in the Cal State system. And I think that you need to take steps to reform this. And I would like to tell the residents of Los Angeles that you cannot be told that there's no more waste, that we can't cut more, any spending in the system already, without demeaning the academic mission. The academic mission will still go on with all, with these six figures, without these six-figure salaries. Fortune 500 companies do not pay their administrators or their HR people the amount of money we are paying right now. So I would like to say, please, take steps to reform this. This is an urgent solution, and we cannot be living on student loans for the rest of our life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soni. Mr. Herman, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Martinez, David Wheatley. Yes, Mr. Herman.
Here we go, here we go. Shh, this is my hangover shirt. But I'm not gonna get into the topic with Mr. Laban here. So the point is, let's come together with, with the injustice. Man has always dominated man to his injury. Our police officers deserve the raises. And those words sounded out years ago, for in fact, accurately describes what's happening with our council today. Misrepresentation, misuse for our fellow officers who are no longer here. But they deserve a raise based on I, we, the taxpayers. We, the taxpayers. And attend of the, the trend of the abuse by your power, no matter who they are or where they live, discrimination always and often falls on those who are victimized and who are vulnerable. And I salute you, Mr. Acosta from Boyle Heights, Marine Sergeant, Master Sergeant, fellow neighbor, fellow Marine. Hurrah! And going back on topic, this is a fact, Jack. How do you feel about such injustice? Has injustice accurately repeated itself? Has it? Definitely it has. Read your Bible, Ecclesiastes 8:9, because I'm not religious. I defend the American people for one purpose, freedom of speech, the right to speak. And under the Brown Act, Mr. City Attorney, stop violating our rights here in council chambers. Because again, fifty-nine, right? Fifty-four, nine, fifty? Or fifty-four, nine, sixty-three? City Attorney Mike Fewer, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Stop the illegal alcohol sales.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Martinez.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. My favorite city councilman of all time is in the room, former state senator. There he is, Nate Holden. I mean, when he was running this thing, it was all totally different. We weren't, we weren't treated like garbage when Holden was here. Okay, you are the highest-paid city council in America. And your job is to turn the LAPD into one of the lowest-paid forces in America. They're the only people out there that are protecting us. You're not doing anything. They've left now, but their spirit is here. I want all the tourists to know in the world, when you come to LAPD, when you come to LA, the PD is very thin. You are taking your life in your hands, all tourists. That's why a tourist was shot to death on the boardwalk. Dr. McKenna, we must, in fact, I agree with some of the people, some of the people here agree with me. Dr. McKenna for school board. Only a small part of the city will be voting next month, but you must vote for Dr. McKenna. The LA school board is very important. Glenn Dake, I won't go into it, but if any LAPD that have information on Glenn Dake, please give it to me. And I want you to realize who really runs the city. Not these fifteen people up here. And ask Nate Holden, he'll tell you. Not the Mayor Garcetti, Ms. Garcetti, no. Who runs this city is Eli Broad. These cops should be in front of his desk, his office. Because if he snaps his fingers, everything changes. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, Mr. Martinez, Mr. David Wheatley, Wheatley, please come forward, sir. Please come forward, Mr. Wheatley.
Thank you very much, I'm David Wheatley. I live in the Silver Lake area and I'm a human rights purist. And I'm here to ask the City Council to pass a resolution condemning the state of Israel's brutal attack of a United Nations school on Thursday of last week. I'm doing this, why should this happen in the city of LA? Because there are people in the city of LA who donate to that particular cause. The cause of this, this brutal military regime that attacks innocent people, women and children. I really think the state of Israel is located in the wrong place. I think they're in a bad neighborhood and they need to relocate the entire country somewhere else. Also, I think the state of Israel is like an angry parent who disguises itself as a pious individual and then, and then expresses its rage indiscriminately by attacking and killing women and children, using equipment that they got from us or funding that they got from us. And I think our funding should come to an end and that they need to move somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Last call for Mr. Jose Martinez. I do not see him. With that said, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They consider him posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Okay, announcements, members, announcements. Okay, I do want to just say one to Mr. Fuentes. Hanson Dam is really coming along. That's where I was with the, I take kids camping every year, with the new ranger station and the discovery. I mean, it was a wonderful trip. And I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield for coming out and, and joining me and helped me supervise 108 kids. So any other announcements, Mr. Weezer?
I just have a question, what's tough, for supervising 130 kids or 14 council members?
Hey, I'll stay with the kids anytime. Adjourned motions then. Or did, okay, if everybody in the chamber could please rise for adjourned motions, please rise. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Ernest Bartolo, who passed away right before we went on break. He is the father of Kate Bartolo, a member of the city family, who was a longtime city half, hall staff member to former councilmembers Pat Russell, Joel Wax, and Bob Ronca. Ernest Bartolo passed away peacefully at home in Honeyan Beach, California on June 22nd, 2014, at the age of 92, beside his wife of more than 60 years' net. Mr. Bartolo graduated from Pasadena City College, earned an associate degree in engineering and advanced mathematics. Ernie was a 51-year veteran of the industrial pipe and bulb industry centered in the downtown Los Angeles industrial district. The son of Italian immigrants, Ernie's early life mirrored much of Los Angeles depression era immigrant experience. His family lived in downtown Los Angeles Little Italy neighborhood, which is now Chinatown. Much of Ernie's early years were spent downtown. Even as a boy, Ernie had a strong sense of family devotion. He helped support the family financially at a very young age by selling newspapers at 7th and Broadway, apprenticing as a blacksmith and helping his mother with her catering business. Mr. Bartolo served his country in World War II as an aviation cadet in the US Navy, receiving honorable discharge. He then served in the Merchant Marines, patrolling the California coastal waters until honorable discharge in 1945. Ernie devoted 51 years of action as one of the region's and arguably one of the country's biggest champions of American-made industrial pipes and valves. Ernie enjoyed swing dancing and big band music. He also loved working with his hands, designing the family's three homes and much of the family's home furniture. He also restored junk Chevy Novas and vintage Mustangs for his kids' first cars, Mr. Laban. Ernie leaves behind a loving family and a devoted group of friends. Our thoughts are with them, including his loving wife Annette Bartolo, their five children Kate, Donna, John, Steve, and Bob, and three grandchildren Hannah, Grant, and Spencer Bartolo. Ernest Resto Bartolo, may he rest in peace.
Mr. Bloomingfield?
One for Luis Frankel and one for Liz Tigger. Want to adjourn in the memory of Luis Frankel, who passed away on Wednesday, July 23rd, at the age of 91. She was the founder and the past president of the Tarzana Property Owners Association. She was an active member and is best remembered for the lead for Tarzana behind successful efforts to limit development of the hillsides of Tarzana, establish the hillside parkland, including the Marvin and Browdy Mulholland Gateway Park and the Corbin Canyon portion of the Big Wild, and for keeping multifamily and commercial development out of some of the single-family residential neighborhoods. She developed close relationships between the Tarzana Property Owners Association and the city and county officials, and served the greater Los Angeles area on a number of commissions, including the County Civil Service Commission and the City Fire Commission. While she wasn't active with the board on the property owners in the recent years, she did keep in touch with them, offering advice on a variety of issues. Lynn Schaefer, who's the president of the Tarzana Property Owners, or the vice president, he said that she was responsible for starting people like him on the path for community service. So many others as well were really pushed forward by her over the years. Also- Also, I want to adjourn in the memory of another longtime Tarzana Property Owner Association, Liz Tiger. Liz passed away on May 2nd at the age of 97. She was a tireless activist, serving for many years as the secretary of the Property Owners Association and of the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations. Louise and Liz will be sorely missed. They've inspired many of us to act, to be active in civic engagement, to care for our communities, and to help our neighbors. May they rest in peace.
Mr. Bonney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three today to adjourn in memory of, one of which is Louise Frankel that Mr. Bloomingfield just adjourned in memory of. I'd like to just add a few more comments. I was at her service on Sunday along with my predecessors, Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Rosendahl. Louise, in recent years, after she left the valley, lived in Mountain Gate in CD 11 and continued a career as a civic activist there. From 94 to 2010, she was president of the Mountain Gate Community Association and the Mountain View Association. She, even in her older years, served on the fire commission, as Mr. Bloomingfield said. She was appointed in 2002 and she served until 2010. She loved the work she did there, I remember talking to her about it, and she made it her mission to try to visit every single fire station in the city of LA. She loved the firefighters, worried about their fitness and their living conditions and their morale, and they really loved her back. Her husband, Ernie, who had been married to her for 60 years, said that if you asked her what she missed the most as she grew older and more frail, she would have said horseback riding, roller skating, and the fire commission. She's gonna be deeply missed by her husband, Ernest, her daughters Ellen and Sherry, and her six grandchildren. A friend of mine posted, and a friend of hers posted on Facebook yesterday that it is amazing when you consider that she died at age 91, that almost all of her civic activism, and she served on close to a dozen boards, happened starting in her 50s. So she decided really to create this whole new life as a civic activist here in Los Angeles and were much richer for her contribution. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of another 91-year-old, Evelyn Bernstein, who was a beloved mother and grandmother. She passed away on July 17th. She was the mother to Susan Haskell of Pacific Palisades. She was born in New York City. She and her husband had a career in the medical field in New York City, and after her husband passed away in the 1970s, she moved here to Los Angeles to be near her family and her three grandsons. She'll be dearly missed by Susan, by her other daughter, Anita, her sons-in-law, David and Marvin, her son, Robert, and the light of her life, her grandsons, Josh, Alex, and Michael. And finally, colleagues, adjourn in memory of a young man who passed away over the weekend after a freak accident in Venice. As most of you have probably heard, lightning struck near the Venice Pier on Sunday afternoon. Nine people were injured, one is still in critical condition, and there was one victim who died almost instantly, Nick Fagnano. He was 20 years old, he was a resident of Los Angeles. He had been enjoying the beach with a couple of his friends from high school. He waded into the water to wash the sand off his body when the lightning struck. Lifeguards found his body about an hour afterwards in the water. He was an only child, 2012 graduate of Notre Dame High School in Sherman Oaks, also attended Santa Barbara City College and Santa Monica College. Most recently, he'd been living downtown in the loft with his parents. He was just three weeks away from fulfilling his lifelong dream of entering USC and studying urban development. He was very passionate about downtown LA, coming into its own as a city, and we're all struck by the randomness of his sad passing, and I know Mr. Labange has words to add as well.
Members, Mr. President, he also grew up in the Wilshire area, a fine member of St. Brendan's Church, his family, two parents who loved him, only child, and this is just a strike of one in like seven million for the west coast, southern west coast of California you get hit by lightning. And his service will be this Thursday, 5 o'clock at St. Brendan's, which is at 3rd and Wilton. He's much-loved. I went out to Notre Dame yesterday, Mr. Kerkorian, and said condolences as well as working with the family, but the thing is that his friends really loved him and he was just so inspirational. So it's just a tragedy of nature and will remember Nick well, a great Wilshire baseball player and also All-Star at Sherman Oaks, a knight from Sherman Oaks. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory today of Antoinette Greco, who passed away on Wednesday, July 23rd, after a short battle of cancer. A lifelong resident of San Pedro, Antoinette Greco was born on November 28th, 1931, to Nick and Angelina Greco. Antoinette attended 15th Street Elementary School, Dana Junior High, and San Pedro High School, and Harbor College. At the age of 16, she took a part-time job in the office of Nick Trainee, and by the time she graduated from high school, she became his office manager. Two years later, she promoted to accountant, which she practiced for the next 60 years in San Pedro. In 1955, Antoinette opened her own accounting and tax preparation business. Over the years, she encouraged her employees to learn the business and became independent. Throughout the years, she acquired hundreds of clients and lifelong friends. She was also devoted to Mary Star of the Sea Catholic Church and its ministries. She served as president of the Saint Anne Society for several years and she contributed many hours to their activities. Above all, Antoinette loved her family. She hosted all the holidays and enjoyed sharing her recipes. Italian cuisine was her specialty, but she'll be remembered for her New York cheesecake. Visitation will be held at McNerney's Mortuary tonight at 5:00 PM, followed by rosary at 7:00. A funeral mass will be held tomorrow, Mary Star of the Sea Church, 10:30, followed by a burial at All Souls Cemetery in Long Beach. May Antoinette Greco rest in peace.
Mitchell Englander?
Mr. President, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Diana Dixon Davis, passed away July 13th, and she was a true community advocate in the 12th Council District. Community of Chatsworth lost a woman who dedicated her life being an activist and advocate, compassionate spokesperson for the environment. She received her master's degree in epidemiology at the University of California, Berkeley. She worked for five years at the Argon National Laboratory in Illinois researching health effects of pollution on populations. She then moved to California where she worked on the Cal-Paul Bond Initiative for the Santa Susana Pass State Historic Park. She is one of the foremost, was the foremost, advocates in the formation of the Chatsworth Nature Preserve. In fact, led the effort to save that nature preserve. She was a founding board member of the Chatsworth Neighborhood Council. She served on nearly every committee over her 14 years of service, and she was also an active member of the number of community organizations such as the Chatsworth Community Coordinating Council, the Chatsworth Fine Arts Council, Historical Society, and many more. She attended meetings with her rolling crate, as we all remember, filled with binders and notes and reports piled high, and her spirit touched many. We're all fortunate that she was part of our lives and made our world a better place. She's survived by her husband, Philip, their three sons, Kevin, Scott, and Ben. And I remember last time I saw her, in fact, before she got ill, I was always meaning to ask her why she, every one of her pens had this huge flower taped on it. And I said, does anybody keep stealing your pens? And she said, no, I just like, I like the flower. And so every single one of her pens that she'd always walk in the room with had a big flower and to go along with her big smile. She'll be remembered well, and she did us all a world justice, so thank you.
Okay, anymore on my left side, I'll go now to the right, Mr. Labange.
Tragically in the city of Newport Beach, Ben Carlson, who was 32-years-old, while rescuing a distressed swimmer, lost his life on the 6th of July. Lifeguards, as you all know, and the Yoban's job they did just this weekend in Venice, I think we should remember Ben Carlson, who was 32-years-old, a UC graduate. James Gardner, one of the greatest actors of all time, someone who I got to know when the Raiders were in town, because he was their number-one fan. Tremendous individual, his brother, a great guy too, lived to be 81-years-old, whole long list of television shows and movies, and was a great, great human being. He passed just recently. We want to remember James Gardner for his work. Also, members, Carl Semko, he lived a full life, 101, 11 days past that, was involved in his community in the Los Feliz area, will remember Carl. And finally, Louis Zamperini, who you gotta know was one of the greatest guys that we ever got a chance to meet with, lived in the Hollywood Hills up in Canyon Drive. His son is a member of our staff in building and safety, a great guy. But Louis was a man who really lived many lives and growing up in the South Bay in Torrance, a little airport named after Louis Zamperini, he was a great runner and he ran and made the Olympic team in 1936. He told me, because to travel to Berlin, he traveled in '36 by ship, because he was on a ship, he couldn't work out as much, and he ate too much pasta, he said, and he finished 10th in the 10,000 meters in Berlin. But he was in the Olympic Games in that great dark period, but a great time to be in the Olympic Games in '36. Later on, he came back to USC and went to school at USC, and later on during the war, he was in the service, was shot down, and 47 days he was on a raft and survived it. Interesting enough, a student that he went to school with at USC was a foreign student from Japan and turned out to be his interrogator when he came to camp in Japan. Later on in life, he spoke all about his inspiration, his books that he has written, truly a remarkable man, so much that Brad Pitt's wife, Angelina Jolie, who sometimes sleep in the 4th district, live in a little house there. And so she gets this book and reads it and says, what an amazing human being is Louis Zamperini. And she asks, is the man still alive? And she says, yes, well, where does she live? Well, Angelina and Brad lived down the hill and Louis lived up the hill on Holly Ridge. And she, this movie's coming out, Louis is gonna be honored to be possibly remembered as the grand marshal for the Rose Parade this year in Pasadena, which is special, but 97. But he, up until about he was 95-years-old, he would go to schools throughout the county and talk about his inspirational life, which he was. A truly remarkable man, and I'd like all members of the Senate, especially for his family, to get at Louis Zamperini, may he rest in peace.
It's an incredible book about compassion and forgiveness, and Mr. Zamperini went back to meet his captor and forgave him. It's a tremendous book and would like to join you in honoring Mr. Zamperini.
Thank you.
Okay, so why don't we have two signatures on that one, but all members included. Mr.?
Signature for Son, because he was a great person.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, I have two adjourning motions. First one, I'd ask we adjourn in memory of Bertha Brimon Hartfield, who passed away on July 5th, 2014. She was born in 1936 in San Antonio, Texas. She graduated from Phyllis Wheatley High School at the age of 15, and then she enrolled in Prairie View A&amp;M, where she received a degree in music with a minor in Spanish. She continued her education and later earned a master's degree at Pepperdine University. She's known, well-known and loved in South Los Angeles due to her never-ceasing acts of compassion and her efforts to improve the lives of children and youth. For over 20 years, she served the community as a music and English, as a second-language teacher for LA Unified School District. She's also gravely concerned about the overall health and welfare of South Los Angeles and was instrumental in creating the Los Angeles Brotherhood Crusade. She served as a member of the board for several years and planned and hosted their very first fundraiser. She helped shape their advocacy and policy as well as programming and directed services from that organization. She's known as a world-class bridge player. Her ability to play bridge earned her the American Bridge Association Bridge Player of the Year in 1973. This allowed her to travel while participating in national, international tournaments. She made it a point to see everything and learn about every culture during her travels. She's survived by her son, Michael, and her daughter, Sharice, and a host of family members. Also ask that we adjourn in memory of Bishop Vinton Randolph Anderson, who was born in July 1928 and passed away July 2014 at the age of 86. He was the 92nd elected and consecrated bishop of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, who rose to global prominence in 1991 as the president of the World Council of Churches. Retired in 2004 as a bishop in the 2nd Episcopal District of the AME Church after 32 years of ministry and 52 years in pastoral ministry, was a landmark occasion marked in Washington, DC. Education was one of Bishop Anderson's compassion and he was beloved by many young people for inspiring them. He's married to his wife Vivian for nearly 63 years. Among his other accolades was the head of the Board of the Wilberforce University, a prominent US institution affiliated with the AME Church. It was the first college to be owned and operated by African-Americans. Funeral services were held on Thursday, July 17th, at St. Paul's AME Church in St. Louis, Missouri. Bishop Anderson is survived by his wife and a host of family members.
Okay, I'm still looking to my right, I don't see any other. I will say to you, Mr. Labange, I did receive a note from Councilman Holden, and he said that Mr. Garner was the second number-one, second Raider fan, that Nate Holden is the first, so I wanted to let you know that. So anyway, with that said, members, we are adjourned.